Welcome everyone to these candidate interviews for Stockton City Council District One. My name is B. Lingenfelter and I represent the League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County. We are taking advantage of the opportunity provided by virtual options to allow us to reach a larger audience than candidate presentations that we have held before. We will be interviewing candidates individually and asking each the same questions developed by the League of Women Voters and Faith in the Valley. We will then make a recording of all the interviews available on our League YouTube channel and links will also be posted on our website. Before we begin, I wish to tell you a little bit about the League of Women Voters. The League has two major priorities, advocacy and voter service. With respect to advocacy, the League, after careful consideration and study, will take a stand on issues that are important to the public welfare. With respect to voter services, our role is to educate the public on issues and to give exposure to candidates so that voters can make up their own minds. At no time does the League endorse a candidate nor a political party. In that way, we are nonpartisan. Today's interviews are part of our voter service efforts. For today's program, I will ask each candidate the same five questions. Only one candidate will be on this Zoom call at a time and each will not be able to hear the other's responses. The candidates will be interviewed in a random order.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Padilla and I'm running for City Council District One.
Thank you. Thank you for being here for these interviews. You will have up to two minutes for an opening statement before I begin asking questions and then you will have 90 seconds to respond to the questions, to each of the five questions, and one minute for a closing statement. Kathy Schick is on there. She is our timekeeper. She will give you a 30-second warning before the end of your time. And then when it's time where you have to stop, she will show her time card. So you're able to see Kathy, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, great. So we're very happy to have you here.
Thank you.
We're going to begin with you to have your two-minute opening statement time so you can begin whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Michelle Padilla and I'm running for City Council District One, which is basically located in North Stockton. I have grown up in Lodi. I was born and raised in Lodi. However, after high school, with seeking job opportunities, I migrated to North Stockton and this is where my husband and I have raised my family of a son and daughter. My son attends UOP, getting his masters, and my daughter will be graduating as a senior this year. I myself am seeking my masters in education and I've been working in education ever since 2007. With that, I have a huge passion for our youth. Now, the big question for me is why are you running for city council? That's what I get from all my friends, family members. Another passion of mine is civic participation. I've always been involved in my community, whether it be Little League, parent board, homeowners association, or just local volunteering nonprofit organizations. And when the opportunity came about, I thought, you know, I enjoy community involvement so much, why don't I do something for my city? So with the crime at a outstanding rate, especially with a homicide in one of my local parks, I thought, you know what, enough is enough and it's about time that I get involved with my city. And so I put in my application for City Council District One and I'm going to utilize my experience, my morals and values to do what's best for the city of Stockton.
Thank you very much. So the first question. Identify the top three issues that residents face in your district and elaborate on how you plan to address those issues.
So the top three issues that I feel homeowners are mainly concerned about in my district are crime, public safety, homelessness, and community revitalization. I just want to note, as community revitalization being one of my top priorities, it's a wide span from fixing our sidewalks, potholes, beautification of our city, but it also extends to youth programs. Again, reiterating, I have a strong desire for our youth as I feel they're our investment. So one of my top priorities being crime and public safety was, like I said, brought about from recent homicides in one of our local parks located in Spanos East. Oh, gosh, I didn't know. I was so quick. So in regards to crime rate, I plan to utilize police substations, funding the police, putting more police out in the community, building relationships, homeless crisis, I am hoping to abide by the laws that we already have in place to...
I know. It goes very fast.
Yeah.
I understand. I understand. There's just a lot to say, but we appreciate all the time to pack into those times.
Okay.
So second question has to do with city budgets. So cities must balance their budgets and as a council member, you would be asked to approve a budget and would need to know if the financial projections presented in the budget were realistic. So what factors would you use to determine the accuracy of the city's financial picture?
So actually, being a first-time candidate, I do have to mention I am quite green when it comes to those areas. However, I would utilize resources within the city to obtain knowledge on how to specifically make those budget decisions. Though, priority would be to the people in the city of Stockton. I would make sure that my vote is based on necessity, need, and not necessarily just wants. Basically, not just throwing money to make it stick or fix a problem. And I recently had the opportunity to speak at the city council meeting just recently when the city council was making a decision on $10.2 million. And I did voice my opinion that some of the items that were being used would not benefit the people of Stockton. So I would make conscious decisions where the money is going to be spent and to make sure money is spent wisely and for good use and for the people of Stockton.
Thank you. The next area of questioning is about the housing issue in Stockton. The city is required to adopt a housing element in its general plan, describing the need for various levels of housing and establishing goals to meet those needs. The lack of affordable housing and housing instability are two of Stockton's biggest problems. What would you do to assure that the housing goals in the general plan are met?
So we do have a lot of resources within our city and I don't think we're utilizing them appropriately. For example, we may have funds for another project. However, they may be filtering from funds to fix another problem. So I would make sure that funds are appropriated based on need. Again, we do have a huge homelessness problem. Inflation is going up, we all know. However, we are losing our people, meaning people are moving out of Stockton, going to the Bay Area because they want better income. And we want our people to stay here in Stockton. We have so much to offer, so we need to make sure that our citizens can afford housing and they're able to buy a home. They're able to live in our community and have that same opportunity as the other person. So I again would utilize our resources within the city to make sure that all people are treated fairly, equally, and have the opportunity to obtain a home and raise their family here in Stockton.
Thank you. What is your plan to ensure there is long-term sustainable funding to support gun violence reduction strategies, such as the Office of Violence Prevention, in order to advance peace in the city of Stockton?
So again, I'm a big advocate of building relationships within the community and I think one area is to build a relationship with our Stockton City Police Department. We need to have more visual presence. And again, back to what I had mentioned before, being green when it comes to budget. And I again would utilize my existing resources or resources out there to obtain financial resources or vote on financial resources that would help maintain public safety and peace on our streets. I feel that with building relationships in our community, that would also help build peace on our streets. I know we do have a big gun violence problem. So hopefully with building those relationships and having more police on the streets, that that would limit our crime, reduce gun violence.
Okay, thank you. And the fifth question, final question. What is your understanding of the authority you have as a council member to address issues that are important to District One and to the city as a whole?
So initially, you know, people think that the city council does not have, you know, that they're just a voting board. But I have grown to know that we are advocates for our people. And when I'm running for city council, I don't feel that I'm running for just District One. I feel that I need to look out for our whole city as a whole and not just my area. So any decision that I make on city council, I need to make sure that it not only benefits my area, but it benefits the people of city of Stockton. In addition to that, you know, it's just, it's about connecting with the community, reaching out to see what their needs are, what their concerns are, what how they would like to see our city grow and be safe. And then making sure that our county supervisors are doing their jobs so that we can get the needs met for the people of Stockton and that we have retention, job retention, and that people are proud to be residents of the city of Stockton.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our questions and now you have one minute to just make a concluding statement.
Again, my name being Michelle Padilla. And, you know, I may be new to local politics. However, I feel that my upbringing, my experience in the community, my experience as an educator can bring much benefit to the city of Stockton. I am transparent and I'm honest in my decisions. I am going to work hard for the city of Stockton. I am proud to be a resident of the city of Stockton and I want to do whatever it takes to make sure that we are safe and that people are proud to be living here in Stockton for today and for years to come.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. And then we are ready to begin. So you have two minutes for an opening statement.
Well, first, I want to say thank you, B., for ensuring and setting up my participation in this. I know I was scrambling there at the last second, but that was really on you and your peers, making sure that I had a chance to be here. The last four years have been pretty crazy as a council member. I think I could say unprecedented in our lifetimes with COVID. We haven't seen anything like this in government for probably nearly 100 years. It was definitely not what I had imagined my first four years in the council would be. It was definitely interesting. So operating in this environment and making sure that our community still had needs is still a priority and is a priority of all seven of us council members. So I feel in the last four years, we've had a lot of success. And I've done this while working full-time. I'm married. I have three kids all under the age of 10 who all have needs and attention from their father as well. So I haven't missed a meeting that I can remember on the council and have been a huge advocate for my district and just for Stockton as a whole. So it's been an amazing four years on the council and this council has accomplished a lot, especially given the environment that we're in. And I can, I know homelessness is one of the big things that we're tackling right now. And, you know, our thing is we have to get beds in order to comply with Supreme Court decisions. We need to make sure that we're supplying enough beds so that we can get those resources for those people. So I know that one has been a big deal here in the community. And like I said, I have to get a score, I have to get a card up because there's so many accomplishments that the city has done that I try to remember everything is not easy. So I always kind of look down to make sure, okay, yeah, 5 million pounds of garbage cleaned up last year and another 5 million cleaned up the year before. These aren't things that cities do, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. So question number one. Identify the top three issues that residents face in your district and elaborate on how you plan to address those issues.
So top three issues in 90 seconds. So I, you know, they're very much what the council has prioritized, you know, housing and homelessness, crime and fiscal sustainability, you know, and it's kind of what I put in my profile. As far as homelessness, you know, like I said, I can read from the card and tell you that we've, just in the last couple of years, $7 million allocated to supportive services, $8 million to support affordable housing, another $8 million pledged for permanent supportive housing, 24 beds funded for homeless youth, 39 beds for chronically homeless, $12 million fees waived just to build homes to keep up with demand. And if you saw in the paper the other day, $30 million project approved for Project Home Key, something that I've been a huge advocate for, to make sure that there were beds available for aged-out youth in the foster system. So, you know, these are, these are how we're going to have impacts. And as far as crime, it's really being committed to our police, our public service. I have their support. I have their endorsement and that's for a reason. You know, I know and I work well with these folks and I have their best interests at heart and that's what we're going to do. And with hiring a new police chief, we're going to be getting those folks in there. And then as far as fiscal responsibility, we're, last year, we were the top five in the country for fiscal responsibility and fiscal health. You know, those are, thank you.
Well, the next question is actually about fiscal responsibilities, so you can maybe carry on. So the question is, cities must balance their budgets. As a council member, you would be asked to approve a budget and would need to know if the financial projections presented in the budget were realistic. So what factors would you use or have you used to determine the accuracy of the city's financial picture?
Well, we, we often meet with the auditors. I meet with the budget officers for the city. We meet with outside auditors annually, quarterly, and we look at all these things. I could tell you at the very beginning of COVID, folks were saying the sky was falling, a recession was happening. You know, and I'm as middle-class as they come and I would go to Costco and I would see people waiting in line just to get the last roll of toilet paper. So I had a feeling that, you know, financially, we're a little bit better off, you know, than we were. So, you know, I had done a lot to commit to make sure that we weren't going to cut services, you know, maybe like some other jurisdictions we're doing. And we ended up having a really good financial year. So, you know, those are the type of things, you know, that this city of Stockton, I think it's three or four in the country for fiscal health. Those are decisions that I get, that I'm a part of in some of the decisions I make for hiring people. So, you know, we hired this new city manager who's been prudent with financially. So it's a lot of the same, making sure that we were responsible. We take the funds that we pay, we competitive wages, which we're looking at more. You know, bankruptcy really put the city in a spot where they're really hesitant to make some more bold decisions. But, you know, now we're financially healthy, a lot healthier than we were, and it allows us to make some more bold decisions that could benefit the community, you know, while maintaining our, our health, our financial health.
Thank you. You've mentioned housing. The next question is related to that. The city is required to adopt a housing element in its general plan, describing the need for various levels of housing and establishing goals to meet those needs. The lack of affordable housing and housing instability are two of Stockton's biggest problems. What would you do to assure that the housing goals and the general plan are met?
Well, I feel, having been on the planning commission four years prior to my four years in the council, I was part of the general plan in getting the housing element put in there. So a lot of these things are about complying with the state and what the state wants and then, and then working with your local developers to make sure that we're meeting those needs. And I think, looking again, looking at kind of what our successes have been around, around housing, you know, we've waived almost $35 million in fees in 2020 for, for housing. What's going to happen when we build those houses? It affects the market, which means that it makes housing more affordable. And not just that, when we were looking at community assistance, we gave $40 million in emergency rental assistance last year, $1.6 million just to help people with their water bills. So, you know, I think this council has been doing a lot to make sure that, that housing needs are addressed and we're always available to the community. I constantly meet with developers and affordable housing builders to make sure that their needs are being met. I mentioned earlier that Project Home Key project. I was a huge advocate for this when, when we were putting funds together and I knew that we could leverage funds, city funds, and be able to get several times the amount of dollars just to be able to fund this. So very little commitment from the city for a $30 million project. So it's understanding these things, I think, that allows us to make those kind of outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Crime, as you've mentioned, is an issue. This next question asks, what is your plan to ensure there is a long-term sustainable funding to support gun violence reduction strategies, such as the Office of Violence Prevention, in order to advance peace in the city of Stockton?
Well, as you know, that is heavily funded by Measure A. So I think that in order for us to really do these things long-term, we have to make sure that Measure A is continuing to go. One thing that I didn't realize when I got into the city council and you learn it when you get in here is cops aren't cheap. They're not just a salary. They're a pension. There, there are any other costs associated with them. So it's not a cheap thing to just budget for and the same for Office of Violence Prevention. So, you know, those costs, they rise every time a contract is renegotiated. They rise and they're not rising at the same rate as the tax revenues are. So, you know, we have to be smart about how we are navigating and how we plan to get our police department back to the full force. You know, we recently hired a new police chief. We've had an amazing police chief prior to that for the past 10 years. He's going to come in with strategies, you know, and we're going to be working on making sure that our officers are better paid, more competitively. And we're building community trust. I think if anyone had an opportunity to watch the police chief forum, it's, everyone's understanding how important it is to build trust. So he gets it. He came from a city that had very similar issues to the city of Stockton and they've done it. So we have an amazing police department and a community that is going to be building on trust. And when, the more trust we have, the better and the lower our crime statistics are going to go.
Thank you. Final question. What is your understanding of the authority you have as a council member to address issues important to District One and to the city as a whole?
This is something I have to experience all the time. It's, it's not, it's, it's what, I deal with this when I'm talking to the public a lot. They, they think it's as easy as me just saying, do this, and it's not. You know, we were on a body of seven and we have to work with our peers. And I've done very well working with my peers to get things done. That, like I said, that last year when we were able to pull $10 million out of the surplus revenues, those went right into the community. So, and other things like building our parks. One of my biggest priorities, getting on the council, were our parks. They had so much deferred maintenance and I had meetings often and early with our previous city manager and then our new city manager. One of the first things we did was resurface basketball courts and tennis courts that hadn't been done in over 20 or 30 years. So I can't do this by myself, telling, telling the city manager what he's going to do. This took building relationships with my council, which I have very, very good ones with. And, you know, we can make things happen and I felt like I've been in that group that's been able to make things happen this past four years. Not just that, you know, working not just at the state, at the local level, but at the state level. A park that, you know, hadn't been, the playgrounds haven't been replaced in over 40, 50 years. I was able to get Carlos Villapudar, our assembly member, to give us money to replace equipment so kids can play in the park. These are the type of things, little things that increase property value and not just that, increase the family's quality in the community.
Thank you. And so now it is time for you to give your final statement. You have one minute to do that.
Well, thank you for having me. The last four years, like I said, they've been a roller coaster and I've been so focused on making sure our community needs, but it's, it's so fluid. You know, you, you have a priority today and then tomorrow, all of a sudden, COVID's happening and you're having to not have events or not be able to gather or can't go out and shake hands. And, you know, even being a father and a husband, you know, those have their challenges from day to day. So it's quite the juggling act to try to get everything accomplished. But I think it's been four years of a lot of success and, and experience. And what the next four years is going to do is allow me to build on that, build on those relationships with the city manager, build on those relationships with my peers on the council. And I think with COVID behind us, there's a lot more good coming and I have the experience to make that happen. So I appreciate your time for allowing me to participate in this and stay tuned because good things are going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. All right. Then if we are ready, I'd like you to begin your opening statement.
All right. As you all know, my name is Felix and Felix Obah. I'm married with two kids and I'm a graduate of project management. I currently work with the Amelia and Adams Life Center as a social worker. This is part of what I, what is driving me, you know, to help the community. Currently, the COVID Equity Coordinator, Outreach Coordinator for Amelia and Adams Life Center. I've lived in Stockton for close to seven years now and I guess that's a summary.
Okay.
Well, yeah. I'm an immigrant too.
Thank you. All right. So the first question. Identify the top three issues that residents face in your district and elaborate on how you plan to address those issues.
All right. I'm going to start with number one. Number one is safety and security. Very important. And my plan on how to handle that is there is, during my research, I found out that there's an office under the city manager, the Office of Violence Prevention, that, that needs to be funded, needs to be staffed. Because when, when there is an incident, these people are on the, in the community trying to, you know, help to quench whatever trickle-down effect that will have, you know, happened. Help to quit whatever trick put down if fed that will have, you know, uh, happened. But because they are not fully staffed, the case management, the case load is too much for the staff there. So one of my. Goals is to ensure that that office is fully funded and fully staffed. Number two is homelessness. And um, I keep telling people, because a friend of mine asked me, oh, there is no magic wand to solving homelessness. I told him that's the problem. We have this mentality, there is no magic wand to fixing homelessness, and we have been overrun every day. Uh, affordable housing is one of my plans. And number three is jobs. Uh, we need to attract uh more uh jobs to Stockton. Because that will help in solving the issue of safety and security and homelessness in Stockton. See, thank you.
Thank you. The second question has to do with city budgets. The cities must plant, balance their budgets. As a council member, you would be asked to approve a budget. And would need to know if the financial projections presented in the budget were realistic. What factors would you use to determine the accuracy of the city's financial picture?
All right, uh, first of all, um, the number one factor is to know how much, how much are we bringing in into the covers of the city? For us to bu- uh for us to uh balance the budget, we need to know how much we're bringing in and how much we're spending, the expenditures, uh, the expenses. Uh, so, uh, uh, I would have a team around me to do that math. If there are places that need cut, there are some expenses that are not necessary, we need to cut those expenses. But there are expenses that needs, uh, there are some uh side that needs funding, we have to increase those side that is funded. But the thing is that because um most cities will overlook some expenses that are not necessary. And they are they are consuming money, so those expenses need to go. Um. For example, there are some government buildings that needs to be sold because they are no longer useful. So we need to let them go and then use the money for something else, you know, like for something for education or for security. Uh. Uh, I think that's it. We need to work on cutting some things that are not necessary for the city.
Right, thank you. You mentioned housing. This next question is in that area. The city is required to adopt a housing element in its general plan, describing the need for various levels of housing. And establishing goals to meet those needs. The lack of affordable housing and housing instability are two of Stockton's biggest problems. What would you do to assure that the housing goals and the general plan are met?
Now, number one. Um, I read Mayor Silva, I read his website where he said. This was like ten or twenty years, fifteen years ago, where he said he's, one of his goals is to buy um. Abandoned warehouses to turn them into shelters. Now, if he had followed through with that plan. By uh Mayor Stockton, uh Mayor Star, Tops would have continued where he stopped. So one of my goals is to ensure that there is a lay-down plan, that a ten or twenty-year goal that. When we leave, when we step out, the next people coming in would have to continue from there. Because if we don't do that, we still will keep second round and round and round. Everybody comes in and do their own thing. So there is no lay-down plan for the other person coming in to continue with, just like, uh, there is nothing for Mayor. Uh, Lincoln to continue from Mayor's uh tops. So one of my very important goal is to ensure that we have a ten-year goal for affordable housing. Where in the next five, six, seven years, we would have gone fifty percent of our plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is related to crime, and some of this you have mentioned. What is your plan to ensure there is long-term sustainable funding to support violence, gun violence? Reduction strategies such as the Office of Violence Prevention in order to advance peace in the city of Stockton?
Um, just like I said before, that office needs to be staffed and fully funded, very important. Two. Um, because there is investments are leaving Stockton. When they leave, it makes space for the bad bad eggs of the society to come in. So we need to attract investments, and one of that is, one of my plans is, there are, you know, uh, public uh. Uh, parks like Disney. If you go to Disney and tell Disney, hey, we want to partner with you, we need a mini Disney in Stockton. If they come here, we have lands, we, you know, partner with the county, if we get a mini Disney around here. That is bringing investment into Stockton. In turn, it will attract investors into Stockton, and then the crime rate goes down. But because there is no investment, everybody's leaving, so it that space that is uh is uh is left. Is now occupied by the the drugs and the the gun dealers. That's number one. Number two. Um, we need to bring better paying jobs so that the Stocktonians will be able to afford a rentage. Because the drug laws and now the people dealing in goes, they pay cash for houses. And then the people who are doing the 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 good, uh, the the better jobs, they can't afford rentage. Talk more of buying house because of uh uh low wage in Stockton. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final question. What is your understanding of the authority you have as a council member? To address issues important to District One and to the city as a whole?
Um. I'm going there to serve my city, my constituents. What is more important to them? Like I've I've spoken, even before I made the decision to run for office, I've been speaking to people. Number one issue is safety and security. Number two is homelessness. So. For us to achieve that, we must have to work with the community and partners. Like I have some uh organizations that work uh with the homeless people. The city, me as a council member, even elected, would have to get these people involved to ensure that. Uh, we are working hand in hand to solving the problems at hand. But if if we're not sinking. The organizations handling homelessness and the government is, they are not sinking, then nothing is being achieved. Uh, and then when it comes to security, we must have a better funding for our uh. Our public safety services, the fire service, the police, uh, you know. Uh, even the hospitals, we need a better funding for uh such uh places. Uh, to ensure that Stocktonians wouldn't have to move out of Stockton because of us uh. Uh, safety and security and lack of uh resources.
Thank you. And so now we've come to the time when you have one minute for your closing statement.
Um. What I will say is just, I will ask people to go out there, vote your conscience. Uh, I am. My name is Felix. I'm a Democrat endorsed by the Stockton Democratic Party, the San Juan Democratic Party, and the Truman Club of San Juan. I believe in the woman ha- choosing her right between her, the choice should be between her and her doctor. I I believe in equity and equality. And I believe in universal healthcare because universal healthcare is one of the tools to fighting waste in our and. In uh, in our community. Um, uh, we should avoid cutting jobs, rather we should attract jobs to Stockton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Obah. We really appreciate you being a part of these interviews.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.